Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So.
You want a second?
Okay, in favor, all right. Okay, we'll move down to get speakers communication informational items. First thing on there is the Condes Creek Land State Restoration Project. I think that's just an informational item. We'll move to Department of Transportation. I'll move State Department, that's another informational. Then we move right on down to, I guess, Speaker Betty Riley.
Good afternoon. I'm basically here just to give you a briefing on the redesignation of the Lake County, Lakeview Enterprise Zone. The current zone has been in place for almost 10 years now and it will expire in June 30th of this year. So as the co-sponsor of that zone, you will be asked to pass a resolution which will come before you officially at your next meeting on May 8th. And I just wanted to make sure, see if there was any questions about the Enterprise Zone itself before that meeting and before you're required to actually, you know, pass that resolution. We have met today with the taxing districts that have been impacted, that will be impacted if a project is coming into the community and answered their questions about it. And I'm here basically just to kind of explain the process that we will go through is, the zone is the same zone outlay, the map has not changed from when you expanded it in 2014, which, or 15, I believe that was, which seems like it was only yesterday, but primarily the Enterprise Zone includes the urban growth boundary of the town of Lakeview around the airport and there's a small parcel that used to be a slaughterhouse, it's also now being the Enterprise Zone. That Enterprise Zone cover, allows businesses within it that are trade sector businesses to be able to apply for an abatement on new investment so that investment is into an addition of equipment or if it is someone new coming to the community and they need a new building or new equipment into that facility, then that new investment would have by right a tax abatement for three years. If that, they need the requirements which primarily is at least $50,000 of investment and an increase of employment of 10%. So for an existing business that has 70 people, they would have to add seven people to be able to qualify for the Enterprise Zone benefit. But if they're new to the community, then they could qualify with just one new employee. So that's, the program is primarily one to incentivize new expansion of businesses and to try to help with our, you know, improving our employment base. The Enterprise Zone program will be taken advantage by the Red Rock Project and so, and that has been a longer term Enterprise Zone process which Mike has, went through with us on that one and so that one has already been approved by this council and they, they will be taking advantage of the 15-year tax abatement for that project, which also includes a negotiated community service fee. So that's really what I'm here today just to see if there are any questions, see if anyone needed additional information before we come back to you with that resolution for town sponsorship. Mike?
I wanted to question the situation in regards to the evolution of new industry in our state. The town of Lakeview has a new industry that we have welcomed and we have no agricultural land, so how does agricultural land fit into the Enterprise Zone? Because that also provides jobs and so I just wanted to see if...
We do not, if, primarily they have to produce a product and would have sales primarily outside of the region, which means they're shipping or producing outside. I have not ever had...
That question asked before.
If there's not, agricultural concerns by themselves do not qualify for Enterprise Zone incentives? Food processors would because they're giving a value add to the, whatever, whether we're starting.
Or other processors?
Other processors, yes. So the difference is being, you know, pure agriculture versus manufacturing, if you will.
Okay, well, I think that in the redrawing of the Enterprise Zone for the next 10 years, since the town of Lakeview has some industry and we need to create agricultural land, we should look closely at that before we formulate.
As it stands now, it's only the industrial lands that are included and primarily, well, it's, it's the whole town if you look at the map. So anything within the town boundaries is included. Whether, by statute, we are not, we cannot assist agricultural production at this point in time, but we can if they have a facility where they work processing, yeah. We do have a project that is citing in Marin now that is called Cascade Potatoes that is actually using potato cold, cold potatoes for...
Pecked.
Pecked. And so they do qualify. And so again, that, that is an example that's kind of taking the product, taking that product and then processing.
So if there's any factories that...
So I have manufacturing, yes.
And it uses all kinds of products?
By definition, yes. I've never, like I said, I've never had one before, but we haven't had, we don't actually in our two county region have a lot of businesses. They would, by definition, they would qualify for this. They have to be bringing new equipment into the, into, and spending, investing in equipment.
So if, if some of the land that's inclusive in our urban growth boundary, which is the free Enterprise Zone, is already agricultural, can that be utilized in that fashion?
Not for the growing, not for the actual...
But for processing of products?
But processing if that isn't allowed land use, then yes. Again, it's new investment, so new building, new equipment that is fixed, affixed to the building, it can't be...
As long as it's providing those jobs.
Right.
Anybody got any questions? Thank you, Betty.
Thank you, Betty.
Next on there is our LOC bulletin in your packet. We're going to move on down to the public comment. You guys drive careful.
Yeah, thank you, Betty. Thanks for your signs later.
Anybody have any public comments? Okay, move down to old business, the TLC Advisory Committee.
What does TLC stand?
TLC.
Oh, TLC, I'm sorry.
It's the lodging.
Okay, tourism lodging stands. Later.
I guess I could do better than that. But we've never formed an association that had a advisory committee.
We need to have a work session as we discussed and formulate what key ingredients we had to have thrown at us in the last meeting as we had discussed. I mean, Tom, you were there and threw out the ideas on dispersment of getting a variety of representatives from our community involved in different facets. And so I think another work session is definitely due pretty soon because we're going to start collecting tax money pretty quick. We haven't got any conference yet, so these ones are pretty important.
We need to make sure we don't forget about it.
Well, and, no, I know there was also forums that we had talked about that we need to recover in the work session to see what, you know, those people can, can put in as far as their request for serving on the board and why they desire to serve on and why they're interested. I think that that's all important and we need to take a good hard look at it. That's a lot of money, a hundred thousand plus that we're going to be expending and those people are going to have a large amount of that that are at their discretion to recommend to us to use. So I think it's very important that we take a long look at it.
And we'll have a work session and we should, for someone to...
Well, and we need, I guess, in that work session cover it from top to bottom because there's a lot of in, key ingredients that we've got to put together before we can really start spending money.
Let's move on to...
Are we beginning minutes from what we had with those terms at the start?
Figure out, in that work session, who we want on there or maybe put out a...
Well, at, at that time, we need, like we said, a request for those who are interested.
Yeah.
That would be the fashion I would think we would want to go by.
Move on to new business, let's go to Lakeview Saturday Markets, Amanda Brown.
Before Amanda speaks, I think we have run into a little difficulty with using the change that we refer to for this due to the, pardon, the zoning and, you know, through our planning department who has told us that in order to do that, we would have to make a proposition or proposal to them for a variance to do that and which would cost considerable money for you to do it and also take time that you probably don't have to finalize the decisions. And according to what Roberta and I have heard is, found out is that the only thing that they allow is something that is 30 consecutive days of something besides being parked. We did discuss some of the options that were discussed at your meeting tonight in using the city parking lot, which you've been using and when it does need to be torn up for a water line to go through there, blocking off one of the streets downtown and then Amy had suggested other options that you might want to look at too at other places on town property, but that's kind of where it stands at the moment and that was kind of a big surprise to us. That's right, was the direction that they had to take.
Yeah, so just so that I can kind of understand, what is the variance that's different there versus at the current, our current location?
Well, because the, I think the regulations are different for parks than a parking lot.
Okay.
That's residential, I mean, this is commercial.
Okay, and that's, and totally understand that, that's why I was, you know, asking if they don't, you know, I don't know. I just, I'm looking at it going, city property, city property, you know, that's how I...
Well, this is news to me, too, so...
Yeah, well, it was news to us too.
Yeah, because you're now, so...
Did that still fall under the swimming pool park to go?
I would assume so, that's one of our parks, but, you know, I...
Either the zoning, I mean, would that be zone residential too then?
It's commercial.
It's commercial.
Commercial, right.
Yeah, and that map shows that everything downtown is really high.
So if it's at the swimming pool park, it might be the same as if it's at the city parking lot, right? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I mean, we'd probably have to double check that.
We'd have to look into it too and, and there's a little bit of time, not a lot of time, but a little bit of time.
Amanda, you had mentioned the 395, and I understand that because you've got the traffic logging that passes by. Something that came to mind was, I noticed that the courthouse lawn is being utilized for various functions and hints and displays and what have you. That is on 395 and the town has helped you for a long time in regards to a facility and maybe during, until you can move back, that might be something we can check with.
Right, and that's some, and that is something we can certainly check with as well. And, you know, one of the reasons that we have to at least temporarily move, temporarily move is because, like you said, you guys are working on water lines which desperately needs to be done. So no matter what, we need to temporarily move. After we met yesterday, I did go onto our Facebook page and I emailed all of our vendors and sent them this form that I gave all of you guys a copy of. And basically I gave them four options, the current location, the kiddie park, the pool, or other. And you'll see that there's a lot more than that and that's why I had to write them all down. Other was, they filled out their own options and some of them they put in McDonald Park, so I don't, so I wrote down everything there except for the pool, which I forgot. But what it came down to is, and the question was asked, if we were to temporarily move, you know, what do you think would be a good location? And 11 people did say keep it where it's at. 24 people said move it to the kiddie park, which, you know, we now know there's some serious issues with that. 10 people said to move it to the pool and then the courthouse and then Jerry's and the fairgrounds. And then after that, it was kind of spread out a little bit from Dollar General to somewhere easy. But, you know, one of the things, like you, you said, Mr. Warren, is the location is important. We don't have a lot of visibility at that park, at the city parking lot, but the other thing is making it child friendly. So that's also a concern too that we need to, you know, kind of keep in consideration. Moving it onto the street, you know, even though it's blocked off, I still think creates somewhat of a hazard because you always have some idiot who goes and drives around the house. I'm just speaking from experience, we've been there, done that. But, you know, we are, this has only been, this survey's only been up for less than 24 hours, but this is what it's coming at. But from, as you can see from looking at it, and if you read the comments too that are on the next page, a lot of people, you can see that there's a lot of references to somewhere where the kids can play, somewhere that's, you know, accessible. So that's something that we do need to keep in mind, you know, no matter what we end up doing. Share, please. Sorry. But yeah, so that's, but we do, you know, and we have a little bit of time, we're not opening until the pool opens and I don't know exactly when you guys are starting to planning on starting construction there, but it's something we need to start working on now so we can figure out what we're doing by, before we open.
So you open in June or what?
We do, our official opening is the pool opening, we start there and...
When we have the, the...
Yeah. So we open up at that, that park there. The following weekend, we're at the daily days at the hospital and then after that, we spend the rest of the summer at our current location. So that puts it like the last week of June is when we typically open up there.
And how long are we going to, I know it's hard to say, but how long are we going to have them snap food?
Well, Jeff was thinking possibly six weeks, so it's quite a, quite a while.
Yeah.
And, you know...
During the busiest time of the market.
A little longer, but I, I think, you know, I think you're bored and you need to consider the other options and then if you want to use the streets uptown or wherever you choose, you know, let us, let us know and if you're going to have a meeting, let me know.
Yeah, well, our next meeting is...
It's May 2nd, 3rd? It's either the 2nd or the 3rd.
Maybe real quick so I don't remind myself here. Yeah, our next meeting is at the beginning of May. It's, I don't know, it'll be May 3rd. And so that's the other thing, you know, is we do have a little bit of time, we're going to be meeting twice, our board is going to be meeting twice in May because we're trying to get ready to open. So the more we meet, you know, and can work on this, the better it is.
Where do you meet? Where do you meet?
We meet at the Chamber of Commerce at noon.
And I'll, I'll be at that meeting also, so...
So Mike, I was going to add, I did talk to the law commissioners about using the courthouse lawn and the existing commissioners are against that. But there's a possibility if we could block off that street, center street right in front of the park, I don't know if that's a possibility, but we did discuss that with you on that one. No, that's, that's, the only problem was moving all of our tents.
What, did they say what their criteria is for usage of the courthouse lawn? Because I, like I said, I've seen it from various parties and organizational gatherings, so I just wondered what their criteria is.
I think it was just the destruction of the lawn, but anyway, but the answer was no, to use the lawn. Yeah, so whether we would revisit that, I don't know.
Another question as we're talking and thinking about it, would it be possible, because this is temporary, to get an exception on the variance? You know, would we be able to apply for an exception on that?
Even an exception would take the same amount of review.
Process period.
Okay, yeah.
It would have to still go to the planning department.
At least for the kiddie park now, I'm not sure the process for like using the pool park or...
Yeah, and the streets would, are something that the council would decide, you know.
Okay, if, if you guys wouldn't mind looking at what it would take to go to the pool, to that park and then possibly, you know, talk to us about it on the 3rd, I guess, that would, that would help too, okay.
There would be some conflicts that I could see, the invitationals from...
That's really would not be an option.
I mean, there's going to be certain weekends that are...
Yeah, there's going to be, yeah, the 4th of July weekend when they have their thing, I guess, pretty cool that weekend.
Well, they have, you know, a lot of typical camping and things there and so it'd be pretty difficult to have the Saturday market, at least that weekend.
Yeah, at least, yeah, that weekend it would be.
We'll try to, maybe try to get some dates on when Jeff plans to start. I won't worry about that, as soon as we open those things, that's just...
Well, that's all we got.
Yeah, it's all, yeah.
Some interesting information about this.
Yeah, and all, and I'm going to leave this poll open through May, so as more people, you know, read it, you know, read the post, get their emails, I should be getting, you know, and that'll kind of give us a better idea of what the public and our vendors think.
Next on there is the Tour de Outback Bike Contest.
As you know, the Tour de Outback Committee have been sponsoring a contest to design bike racks that will remain useful as bike racks but still be decorative and reflect our region. The Outback Pedal Posse, the local bike club graciously donated a hundred dollars to the winner and in our last meeting, we selected a winner. The design is utilizing the basic staple inverted U-shaped bike rack with this, a metal plate welded into it, maybe outlined the state of Oregon with a pair of cowboy boots etched out in the location of Lakeview and then a plate above says Oregon and below Outback. And the person, and this is a slight variation upon the winning submission, but the winner was Megan McGowan, so I will be contacting her now that I have the check so she can come to the bike shop and pick it up. We also have a runner-up that, I personally very much liked his design, but there were some conflict of interest problems since he claimed inadvertently used basically my logo, a kiddie park style license, all of that. I felt like that was just not quite appropriate as much as I liked it. That tall town bike camp will personally be providing a $25 gift certificate to that submitter and that is Clyde Mowgli. I will be contacting both winners to come and pick their prizes up and we appreciate the town and the council's support on getting some bike racks.
When are these bike racks going to be out and about?
We're currently getting bids for having them made, we are hoping to get a local fabricator to build them, but if they come in horribly above the price of going with one of the bigger commercial outfits, we will go that way. As soon as we have some bids, I'll be back before the council will submit those. Any council approval, we'd like to have something this summer.
That's right.
Will they be like bolted down so they don't disappear?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, yeah, they have to be anchored too to snare them, to overexpose them. Yeah, they're generally installed with security bolts so they can't just be unbolted.
Good contest, good project. Thank you.
Okay, next on the new business is the Sunshine Children Center, Marcus?
So we're here, talk about reaching the Sunshine Center for...
Our preschool, the art preschool. Marcus just brought the idea up to Roberta and got us a meeting initially with Roberta who then suggested we present a proposal for the board.
Have you guys been inside the building?
Yes.
How bad was it?
Not bad.
I mean, it, it didn't work, it wasn't cleaning, there's lots of like poison stuff.
The less people just live.
Yeah, so, yeah. And we can, we can utilize a lot of what was left, which we are looking forward to.
Yes.
That's something that Bailey and I would go in and we would be willing to go in and clean that and then remove the trash.
Have you spoken to the state about getting it certified?
We don't, we don't need to certify, to be certified as a preschool, just preschool, no daycare. Totally different. As a preschool program, we need to be recorded, which we would go through the state and we would do that process.
So it's a private preschool?
But you're going to form a non... We would like to form a non-profit at some point. We started looking into that process and how to get that started and going.
Okay, and the town has been presented with other proposals for usage of the building by neighbors, as you recall, and so we've not, we haven't discussed this and that's, you know, so I, I don't know where we're at on usage of the building, it's been tossed around and sold once in a while. So I guess the town certainly needs to look at this, but when are you wanting to?
September. We would like our preschool to be starting in that location, September.
Yeah, one thing we're a little bit concerned about is other preschools have already started their enrollment because it's enrollment time for the next following year and we can't exactly start that until we have a permanent location that we can guarantee, you know, that we will begin in and everything will be cleaned out and set up and all that in a timely fashion that we can get kids enrolled before September classes start.
About the issue of your handicap access?
There's a ramp.
There's a full ramp that's been put in.
Is there a ramp inside the building too?
There's just the one ramp.
The ramp goes out the back.
It's out the back.
Oh, it is out the back, not in the front.
That was the one one we were at.
Yeah. It leads out into the back playground area.
Just getting from the upstairs to the downstairs, is, is that still that very narrow little, and it's permissible to have that?
That would have to be something we check into, however, we're not planning on utilizing the basement, it would just be the upstairs.
Yeah. Our kids wouldn't be going down those preschools, yeah, our preschool kids wouldn't be going down that set of steps.
Years of students used that.
Yeah.
Somehow they're more delicate.
I worked there for a few years and we didn't have any accidents on the steps, thank goodness.
Say, you've, you've got your proposal here for usage, but what is your proposal for the...
What do you mean, do they have an option for another?
No, no, I'm saying if the town were to grant you usage of that building, what would you give the... what would you give the town?
We can guarantee upkeep of the building instead of sitting there empty. We can utilize it. I mean, it's been a community asset for years, and I've spoke to many people, and they're concerned that it's still empty after what, five years or whatever it's been.
You would pay your own utility stuff.
We would like to be able to pay as much as we can. It's a very small preschool program. We want to expand, but in order to keep the expenses, the tuition affordable for the parents and students. Our, you know, our costs, we have to watch our costs. And we're definitely not in it for the money, so that's, we're there for the students and the parents.
Well, until today, it must have been something that's in the off the cuff. There was on our agenda, Marcus Sutton, Sunshine Children's. So until today, I knew nothing about anything. We've had requests from other entities, organizations who want to utilize the building as well. And so, you know, that, like I say, is something that the council needs to, another workstation or whatever they look at. But in regards to the, you say, "we" are our preschool, is that, is this the Bright Beginnings Academy? Because I didn't receive this until today, so this is even newer than my agenda, which we received yesterday from Marcus Sutton's name, so.
Me and her are currently a preschool teacher at Bright Beginnings.
Sunshine Children's Center is kind of what the building is called.
Yeah.
No, but, no, but this is an agenda item that is accompanying this, and I'm in a loss of...
We just got it.
We are looking into a Sunshine Center because of that letter that we received. We are no longer welcome in the basement.
So you are the entity that left our building several years ago and moved to the faith center?
Absolutely.
That was the YMCA.
But you're coming from the faith center. Now, the faith center is where the group, they moved the playground equipment over to the faith center. If you'll recall, they took our playground equipment from the back of the building and moved it to...
Well, that was Nikki Albertson.
But it went to faith center and now these... See, that's where I'm at a loss of who is who and how it all...
We are, we are new. I took over as director a couple of years ago. Yeah, I, everything was put in, played around, all of that was put in when we got to Bright Beginnings. And so I don't know what took place between Bright Beginnings and Sunshine Center prior to that. We weren't connected enough.
Okay, I just know that the equipment left and went to faith center from the town's facility.
That was when the YMCA had it out of cliff. That was all put...
No, that was before the YMCA had it.
Yeah, it was before YMCA.
Sure was, it was prior to that, sure was. YMCA took it after Bright Beginnings or whomever was renting the building and Sunshine Center left.
But I don't believe that the play...
Bright Beginnings, the very first one was Jennifer Gallagher, the LOC, was Jennifer Gallagher.
They moved it to the faith center.
No, she's in half the faith center. They have the same name, they asked Jennifer if they could use that name.
Well, they came to our community under the guise that they're moving the equipment to the faith center, and it was the operators of the Sunshine Center doing so. So how did they get over the equipment, telling us a lie?
That's some research we'll have to do.
We definitely need to look into the usage of the Sunshine Center, and we talked of selling it, but you know, in today's situations of what the town is up against as far as trying to create a tourist community, there is a lot of usage that the town needs to look at as well as utilization of that whole area. Because tourists are lacking restrooms in our community, and perhaps, you know, that building is... I know it's on, as we've heard, Highway 395 prime frontage, and there are other organizations that are looking at it. So definitely, we need to look at the usage of the building. I know that it has been a daycare center in the past, now you're proposing a preschool, and so...
Yeah, and I'm Marcus Sutton, I'm going to have him here. You know, we, they don't have anything to do with what your place there before. They're starting their own company and trying to start a preschool there apart from anybody else.
Why was this letter accompanying this then? Because it ties in the faith center.
Because we are breaking...
It's not new, it's having to move because you're under the wrong jurisdiction there. So it's very confusing to me, and I don't know.
Faith Center Bright Beginnings hired me and Sarah. They were established, they had a previous preschool teacher, all of that stuff was tied in. Those people moved, they left town, me and her stepped in and took the position.
Okay, so it is the same entity that left our, they moved over there, and then you took over.
And so then those people didn't work there anymore and we got hired. I don't know what happened in between there as far as moving, but I think it...
Whatever disruptions occurred over there, okay.
Yeah, but then we...
What equipment was moved?
Playground equipment.
Playground, I guess.
Why did it run across the street from it? There's plenty of playgrounds.
No, 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 this is right behind the school.
Behind the, but that wasn't...
Well, I think they had a little section.
Definitely.
Kind of the side and then they get back.
Amanda...
I don't think it just moved there.
Sorry, my kids were going to that preschool at that location when it closed down. So I, and I know the person who opened up the one at the faith center, so I kind of know the background of that. So at the time it closed down at that location, it was run by YMCA. That playground equipment was put in there while it was being run by YMCA, I remember, because my kids were so excited when it was being put in. YMCA closed, left this town with no preschools other than head start.
No, the equipment was prior to YMCA. Sorry, I know that, I was on the council and it occurred. I live on the same block, I see the equipment.
But what I'm saying is that was done through YMCA.
No, it wasn't. It had nothing to do with YMCA, I promise.
But it was done, okay, but it was done with that... No, it was not. It was done before the YMCA. Oh, was it before, okay, Jennifer Gallagher.
Just wrapped up. Just for this whole fact, and I appreciate you guys coming. Marcus, you and I talked a little bit about this, and I know, the fact is, that equipment's not there, and we probably have no say on what happens.
No, that's yawned, that's...
So it's done, we only need really...
But I just wanted to find out if it's the same entity, but that's the way it was, didn't it do us?
It is not the same entity.
But it's not, and so what...
What the letter said is?
Well, that, your guys' agreement with faith and have done, so you guys need to find a location. You got a proposal to use a location that we have as a community asset that's not being used, and we need to do something with it, something I've been working on for a while, and...
We'd like to have key on it.
So what we need is to get with our legal counsel, see what process we have to undertake to legally enter into a lease agreement. If we have to advertise to see if other people are interested in this, or if we can just take a proposal and run with it. If we have to open it up to bids or whatever.
Well, with the requests we've had before, that would like to do it.
Right, so it's fine, yeah. That's why we need to get legal counsel advice, just make sure we can either enter into an agreement or if we need to look at older options that are on the table. And then, once and for all, decide what we're going to do with this, because as a council, we're in charge of our assets, we've got to do something with it. Because like you said, it just sits there and deteriorates if someone's not in it, who's willing, like you guys have said, to keep up with it. And, you know, whatever your cost, you guys will have to figure out if that's the agreement we come up with. So I say we close this for now. I appreciate, if you have any last comments, fine, but you just got to get legal counsel's advice and then move forward. And like, like we all would prefer as a work session, so we can't talk openly and not, you know, be what we're at right now, so.
Can we schedule a workstation at this time so that we, they know what's coming up and they can have some answers by then? Can we schedule it for two weeks?
Two weeks, who we have three classes on the Tuesday of the month.
But hopefully before that, we'll get the answers.
We just need to do some research on what happened when, somebody's going to have contracts from before and dates, etc. So we need to make that, just look at that before we can say, you know, the story about you guys that we can't make a decision today, but it's...
The legal counsel should be able to tell us within a day what our process is. And we shouldn't wait two weeks for a work session to discuss past history and what might need to happen. I mean, if we want to put out proposals for bids, there's no reason to make them wait another two weeks to then talk about putting out proposals to bid. If legal counsel comes back and says, hey, you should put out a notice that says, please submit bids by two weeks from today, then let's do that, so then we can say, hey, come back.
If the council decides to rent it out, whether they're selling it or not, so the last thing that was done was it was sold. Now we're talking to renting, and we haven't really had a session to discuss that.
We never voted on selling it.
Yeah, we never voted to sell it.
The mental health, we had agreed to sell the two of them. We had agreed to sell it to mental health for thirty-seven thousand or whatever, and they bowed out. Yeah, but yes, that was the last thing that was on the table, so.
So that was...
You want to hear my thoughts on this?
Can I say one closing thing? Because I heard you mention tourists and the town, and it's on 395.
And the lack of a welcome center in our community now, that's taking a lot of, has one here.
Well, you know, I just moved here from Denver, and there's a ton of opportunities, a ton of children's centers. You know, I come here and I see where schools fall short because of funding. And I, you know, I stepped in because I wanted to see that place become like a youth center where kids can go there and get educated, because the youth are our future. And as you can see in today's society, something has went drastically wrong with the way we're raising our children. So I think the more focus we can put into, you know, tourists are great, and that brings money, but the kids that we grow up today are going to be running this town in thirty years. And I think the more one-on-one and more specialty programs we can have to them, I think the town will be better off, you know.
And I would like to comment on your, the Welcome Center, we'll have it back up and going by next year. We just had a meeting on it at the Chamber.
The state has designated this.
Okay, well, that, just right now, we're without one, so a year and we'll have one again, okay.
One of the questions we need to solve is who actually owned that equipment? Because I'm not sure that the town bought it, you know, I don't know who did. But if it was moved out to the faith center church, then, and we do get it, you'll be in charge of moving it back in.
It's not, that was not our property, so.
Yeah, see, I don't think we, I'm pretty sure we didn't own it.
No, we've never purchased, I mean, but you're right, kiddie park, YMCA's failed.
And there's lots of stuff scattered throughout there, but a lot of it can be utilized around the life of the... Also, thank you for coming.
If we could get answers and maybe we can reschedule this, reschedule it tentatively for two weeks, and if anything breaks sooner than that, we'll be in contact, how's that?
And then someone comes up, you guys can play, or let them know after.
You know, I don't know who, you know, maybe you met Jennifer Gallagher.
No, I don't think we...
That's, that's, all I was saying is it was the same entity that moved out, that's what their letter said. That's all I was pointing out.
So let's move on down to mayor council manager updates. Council have anything?
Been working with people, Sarah and Arco apparently.
And that's right, well.
But yeah, we'll figure it out.
I'm going to go over tomorrow and look, see what the police chief has done over at the police station. I think there's been changes made over there, so anybody want to go over, if you said, come over.
I had a conversation here, maybe two weeks ago or so, with Jerry Chin, and he has invited us to tour his facility, to get in touch with him, and he would love to have us and just show what they're doing and what things are. I think that would be kind of nice, because people ask you questions and you don't have enough answers, so. As soon as, the better. Yeah, and anyway, he reiterated that, that invitation. And tomorrow I'm going to whatever used to be Upic and see what's going on there. It seems to have been revitalized to some extent. And I have a chamber meeting first of the month. We'll see how things are going there, it seems to be going pretty well.
Okay, Roberta, do you have anything?
Kid?
Apparently she's not done anything.
It's been busy and it's only Tuesday. Sorry. I did go to the SCOP, or the C Act meeting, I'm on the executive board. There's several grants coming up that we may look at. And in the summer, you'll start to see surveyors that are in town because the new sidewalks that are required to be put in by the state of Oregon in every town, they're going to start surveying at the railroad tracks on 140 and go down to the intersection and then go north up to 10th Street. So they'll be putting in, eventually, you know, putting in the ramps. So they will just be doing the corners, in other words? Yeah, just wherever they have a ramp, they're going to be... Right, and, yeah, not sidewalks in front of the houses. But they're required to put them in, and so they'll be doing that.
It's on public highway within the town, so you said...
No, you said, you said the whole town. I said down the street and then north.
Down north of the north of...
Oh, okay, yes, and so they'll be...
395, 10th Street. So is that all grant funded then?
It's all funded through the state from some lawsuit, because that person that sued them, so they're having to do it.
So, and then they'll eventually run from pretty much our NCY down to Knight Street as well?
Possibly, but, you know, those are fairly used, they might fall under the category that we're okay. But, yeah, they're estimating that each curb then makes eighteen thousand with design.
But the lawsuits paid for, with the state eventually.
But yeah, so that will start in June or so, so we'll be seeing surveyors. And then, like I said, we've got a couple of grant opportunities coming up, and I've been working with Daryl. We're trying to put in a request for regional solutions on the water treatment plant that we are looking at, that kind of help our water. So we're going to try to go for funding through regional solutions. And that has to be done by the end of this month, so like next week. So there's a lot of things that are working behind the scenes right now, but that's, those are some of the main things. And then just keeping up with all the issues I have to keep up with.
Your sidewalks kind of leads me back to where we're at with the annexation stuff, and want to get an update, especially this leads me, a lot of this discussion and what we talked about moments ago was they mean to, my frustration with not having a legal counsel here often. We talked about this other times, I mean, yeah, we can request him to be here.
Is it consensus that everybody wants him here at every meeting? Because why he hasn't been here is because the fact that we are doing those annexations, and it's been passed a whole lot of, that is over his retainer. So he's trying to keep that retainer, and he was here last week, but I mean, he could come all the time.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I missed last week, I apologize for that, so I feel the...
Or last time, but that's the reason he hasn't been coming all the time. And, you know, we may have to delay an answer, you know, for another, you know, week or whatever, but is it worth...
The expenditure.
Yeah, because he, we, that annexation stuff has to be filed by June 30.
Yeah, oh yeah, and that's why, that...
That's why he's really working on that.
I hope so, and I hope so.
An easy process.
Yeah, yeah, and so it has...
I don't need him here, I just, and that June 30th, there's another now dropped, that date that I didn't know about till just now, so it's nice to see.
And I still have about it today when we were talking about the enterprise zone, and then David, what's his name?
Knowles.
Knowles told me it had to be filed by June 30.
And I think there's got to be appeal window, everything's closed by June 30. I mean, that's what, I'm pretty sure.
It has to be in his office, I thought by June 30.
Yeah, but that means it's final. It doesn't get to his office, so it's final, so I don't, I mean, I don't even see this now, we're going to make a decision. We just know our timelines. We're only talking six weeks, I mean, to get these things published.
But we couldn't do Red Rock until they committed that they had bought the land. We couldn't do that, so that's why we're doing it all at once in the 4, 4, 6, whatever it is, north. That, we kind of got ran around the corner by the county on some of that. And so we weren't able to do it last year to get it in time, but we, you know, we've already got most of it worked down. So I think everything's going to fall into place really soon.
You know, and these meetings are all taking an hour, I mean, work session two hours. You know, I understand he's got a retainer, and that seems like, should not be burning up too much of his retainer by him showing up to these meetings, but sometimes we're getting ourselves into what might be shorter meetings if we actually had the... if we actually had legal counsel to say, well, you need to do this and we'll...
Instead of getting into a long discussion, we just need to say we need to do that and move on and get answers to people as soon as we know the answers.
Well, it's like Amanda, like we didn't need her to come back again on something that we knew might potentially be an issue. I mean, I brought up planning last... Two meetings ago, because I missed last meeting, so I think I missed last meeting. I'm thinking I missed...
Well, the, the issue we didn't know about was the fact that it had to go through the planning.
No, I knew that and I brought it up the last meeting that it could be an issue.
And I will leave out that until meeting, man, until Monday to get that in.
But you even see what they...
We just got it. She's not full-time, so then it's, what do I do? Am I, you know, I...
I hear you.
Yeah, because I can't make somebody give me an answer when they're not here.
But we have a zoning ordinance and that's what I'm saying. I mean, never mind. We don't need to get into this right now. But maybe Janine ought to give staff a little bit more training, which I've seen as our contract planner, to tell you guys, hey, here's our ordinance. It's three pages. You can read that. This would not be a lot of use.
I thought you had to get permission from the planning department to use a public park. That was, you know, a surprise.
But as a personal news, that's definitely totally different. No, it's not.
That one brought it back, but I did follow it, which is true.
Yeah, I hear you.
Well, she was gone for a couple of weeks and then she's back again.
But that's why I mean the training needs to happen. I'm not saying we should have to go to her every time. I mean, you know, she's gonna write a report, fine, but again, I'm way off level, so.
I, I just wanted to, Roberta reminded me of the regional solutions team that was here. And in visiting with several of them, some things that came to mind that we are, and Betty being here today, talking about the enterprise zone and the community service fee that I negotiated with, and we all approved with the county commissioners. There's a lot of money that's gonna be coming to our community. It's a ways off, once again, and that's the one we can jump at and say, let's spend, spend, spend it because it's not here and won't be for, until operational at Red Rock. But in our last meeting, it was all an if, when we were discussing it. If Red Rock happens, if Red Rock happens, well, now that it is a go, we need to just start thinking about that and perhaps have a work session on down the line as to usages of those monies. And also, I was at a lack of remembering our agreement on the museum that we had agreed with the county on, and I think it's all plainly stated or should be in our agreement with them. And so that needs to, you know, be something that we look at and consider. I don't think that it increases on a, on a yearly basis as far as the increase or...
It's a flat fee.
It's a flat fee, I think so.
But it is for, it's not for the museums. It's for me.
Me, okay, right, okay, that's true. It was, and that was defined, I remember, I recall that was designated as such. So that was the only, I know I had mentioned that there were no consolations. Nothing like the Ezequielo agreement that we, and that had all kinds of taxing districts that were gonna get funds from the overall. But also something that came to mind and that I did visit with the regional solutions team since Red Rock is a go, that night that I visited with them, it was not a go yet. But now that it is a go, natural gas is going to be a reality to our community. And I think we need to do some research before we jump out and let Avista or any other entity come in and say, this is the way it's gonna be done and this is the rates you're gonna have to suck up. And the town of Lakeview has, once again, another service that they can provide. I visited with regional solutions, also with Larry, who has been in the utility business prior to retiring and going to the state under his economic development task. And he assured me that communities can have their own utilities, as we know. Clement tried to have their electric and what have you. But with the new entity, we should have an equal platform in applying for the statewide grants that the state seems to be readily available to give to the community to provide natural gas and other form of energy in our community. And there are communities that run these that are just as small as ours, and I've mentioned those before. And so I think we need to do some research on that before we jump out and say, okay, here, provide natural gas and charge us whatever you want. Because those companies might charge way more than what the town could do it, just like our water is reasonable. So could gas be for our citizens.
Ken told me today that that pipeline goes through from the coast over, that Arista...
Avista.
Has nothing to do with, with Ruby.
Well, let me finish.
Avista.
That they would get something like four million dollars to come and help put in the gas line here.
That's, that would be a state grant. And that would be something that the town could also apply for. That's what I'm saying. Don't move aside because you're being led by whomever telling you this is the way that it needs to be done when you have other options that could be beneficial to the town of Lakeview. Don't step aside and let somebody from other organizations tell you...
No, I'm just saying, that's what you told me today.
Well, I don't think...
No, but I'm just saying, okay, you step aside for Avista, you've stepped aside.
Right, but I'm not letting him step aside. I'm just saying the information he gave me.
I think it's called looking at all the options, not stepping aside.
Well, that's what I'd say to work session and that's what we needed before we jumped ahead with the...
Can I say something on something else?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, when last week also, or Tommy Dean from Business Organe came in and we were talking about availability of funding through their agencies. So recall, we got the water management update, you know, about twenty thousand dollars. And that's not been completed yet. And I'm gonna push this guy down like yesterday, but it's not being done, or it's not being completed.
When was the closeout date on that grant?
I think it's eighteen months or something, but I...
There is still time technically, but...
And what I was waiting for, and I talked to Connie about it, is I want to do a water sewer rate study to find out where we need to be with our rates. And she said we can go ahead and get that study done without that master plan being completed. But we also need to do a facility master plan update for the wastewater treatment. I mean, we have about fifteen things that we are behind on to get them. So I think maybe during a work session, we can prioritize a couple of things too because there's a lot of stuff that she said, you know, we really need to do. And I said, I'm only working on, you know, quite a few, but they should have ended up, we got prior. So it's like, where do you, which one, you know? So think about that, so when we have a work session, we can kind of open it up.
Maybe we should have a longer work session than one hour.
Well, was it Roberta when you first came to work?
Or we don't need to have it...
Did you call the session that we had as planning? I don't know.
Yeah, it was a goal setting, goal setting.
Goal setting.
Yeah, we had a brief one this year, but I mean, now that we know that all these things, there's funding out there for it. We need to get it done, so, and we might have to have outside services come in and help us get close to it.
So what's a short list of our work sessions?
We could have a work session on another Tuesday where we don't have a town council...
I was just gonna say, at least a couple of hours because... So we're looking at Sunshine Center. We're looking at water master things. We're looking at...
Rate studies.
Rate studies. We're looking at the pipe, the, the natural gas.
Usage of Sunshine Center?
Yeah, so I think...
There's so many things that we have that were...
And where are we at with budget? Like, it's budget time, so...
Oh, I know. And what we're waiting for is audit again, and it has to be submitted to the state by the third. Cause I got an extension.
The Thursday?
Thirty at, at this month.
And then we, I mean, getting our...
Committee.
Committee together as well, is that, aren't even advertised for or looking at that?
We will put another advertisement in the paper. We've got three active people from the one before. And so those meetings will start in a... And one option we have too is it's Saturday, but I don't really wanna take people away from families, but that's another one. Just have a session in one or two days and get those done. So it's up to you guys on how you wanna do that.
Whatever day we do, we just should start at an early enough time. And if we get done before, you know, earlier than that's good, but we may have to stay until we...
But I need the final figures from audit to put the budget together.
And start.
So, I mean, it's just been one thing after another, so... But we will have meetings, you know, probably about, I would say, the third, second. Well, anyway, we will have them to make, we'll begin if we have that then.
The budget meeting?
Yeah, and I'll get the town...
Yeah, I always look forward to that.
Town will happy feet, happy feet. So, anyway, that's what I kind of found out when I talked to Connie, so we've got lots to do.
Okay, so the work sessions started and we'll get, let's get on the ball and get, get a bunch of stuff done.
Well, let's decide, do we want to do this next week or do we wanna wait two weeks?
I'm open whenever...
I mean, I can be here anytime and about everyone else, but the next week is, what, is it the thirty of...
No, it'll be May first and...
My calendar behind me there?
Oops, sorry.
May the eighth and the twenty-second are meetings.
All right.
The first is...
What are the ones in between?
There's only thirty days in, in April, isn't that right?
Right.
So it would be May first and...
I mean, I'm open to having a meeting and then we can get to Sunshine Center, figure it out or what we're gonna do maybe with that one.
It sounds like we really need to kind of handle that and get that so that somebody knows where they stand with that as well as letting us know.
So. Are you guys open for next week?
Sure.
I'm in.
Three o'clock there, four o'clock, which is three?
I'll be back on May first.
I think three would be good, three, yeah. Can you do that, doll?
All right.
Okay.
Earlier than that.
Here we employed one here.
Do you have anything else? Roberta, do you have anything else?
I'm not opening.
Okay. Then we will adjourn the meeting at five oh two.